Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call to order the regular meeting of the Beacon Board of Education. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Roll call. Larry Cohen, excuse. Fifty Dennis.
Here.
Jennifer Edge.
Abson.
Tracy Ann, like Everett.
Here.
Christine Galbo.
Here.
Frank Garna.
Here.
George Hapson.
Here.
Bill Zou.
Yeah.
Melissa Thompson.
Here.
Dr. Dorwood, do you review the fire exits, please?
Yes, the fire exits are located at the rear of the LG.
Would you like to introduce our workshop?
Yes, we actually have two sections for our workshop this evening. Both are budget related. We're going to start off with Tim Fashin, who's going to present a budget on the technology How are you?
Hello.
Just to go over the agenda real quick, I have a slide for the technology part of things. I'm going to go over the current technology staff, the major goals that we've achieved this year, budget code 2630, which is computer assisted instruction, the total technology budget for 2014, 2015, the year to year cost comparison, and then our targeted areas of improvement, which are focus on instruction, focus on technology availability and usability, and a focus on communication. So currently, we have a director of technology in the tech department, we have an administrative school secretary, two network specialists, two information services specialists, an audio video technician, and an office system specialist. And I always like to point out that the office system specialist is our data coordinator who handles our Power School student information system and stuff. The title doesn't always reflect the job responsibilities. Major goals that we've achieved this year, we were able to deploy all of our Windows 8 teacher tablets and docking stations to all the teachers. So we've had a huge, huge year with that. Very positive, very relatively smooth rollout, so we're very happy with how that went. District wide security cameras and door access control has been installed. A lot of you, I think a lot of you at this point have seen some of the footage, and it looks very nice, very crisp. We've already solved some capers, so it's been great. We've increased the wireless network capacity at the high school and the middle school in preparation for the one to one initiative and the online testing initiatives that the state are working on. We've refurbished our wireless network carts as Linux workstations, which has extended the life for another two years with zero additional cost. So we've been able to milk every last drop out of those. The more we can get, the better. And we've actually got two morning news shows now available on our video on demand system. And I wanted to point out a big thanks to Aaron Burke and Gloria Rosati for all the hard work on that. They really made them shine. So it's at South Avenue in Glenham at this point. We're looking to expand that to the other buildings this year. So here's the budget breakdown for the 2630 computer assisted instruction code for 2014, 2015, side by side with this year's current budget. For the administrator, we have $88,217. Technology in-service salaries are $5,000. Technology non-instructional salaries are $335,000. Computer hardware, district, $148,500. Contractual expenses, $415,500. Travel, $5,000. Supplies and materials for the district, $42,000. Computer software for the district, $150,000. Computer software reserve budget, $3100. And the BOSI services, $285,000. For a total of $1,477,317. Here's just a chart showing how we've broken it down across the budget. It's kind of just a different way of looking at what I just ran down. So here is the budget in comparison to the past few years. You'll see in 2011, 2012, we did a straight cut of $100,000 to the technology budget. And we've been working on that ever since. So we're still under that initial number three years later, which is good to be able to say. For the astute, you probably noticed the bump in the salary codes. I wanted to point out the reasons for that bump. A lot of it is actually accounting. You'll see that we've actually moved our administrative assistant from the facilities budget code to the technology code, so you'll see it reflected later. The contractual annual salary increases from year to year, and we have the same thing. Even when we have a flat budget, we've always bumped up for that. And then we've replaced the contract network specialist with an in-house employee. We've saved a lot of overhead costs on that as well. One other thing that I wanted to mention was that we actually were able to, with that network specialist being in-house, cut almost all of our overtime, which was a significant portion. So while that does go up, we were pulling that budget from other codes in the budget. So it's not reflected, but we did save that as well. So this year is a very big year for the technology department, and a lot of it is infrastructure stuff. And I wanted to highlight a couple of those large costs because we had an equipment lease six years ago that expired last year, and we were able to kind of squeak out one year without renewing the equipment lease. The equipment lease had things like our initial computer purchase, our infrastructure Cisco routing equipment, our sans, our network storage, our servers. So we've been able to continue on with manufacturer support of those products for an extra year, which saved us about $50,000 in interest payments. But this is the year where they say, no more. You need to spend the money, and we need to get new money in. So unfortunately, they are end of life, even though we would love to hobble them along for one more year. I don't think we'll be able to do that, and the manufacturers agree. So one of the things that's a notable expense for this year is we have a district IP, a district phone system, is an IP analog hybrid system that we have in place for about five years now. The company, Altegen, has decided to go a different route and eliminate the analog portion entirely. So what that means is if we were to continue on with their plan, we would have to run cabling to every classroom to replace the analog phones, replace our inexpensive, easier repair phones in the classrooms with very expensive, impossible to repair phones. And really, just the price structuring with their new system doesn't pan out. So we're looking at alternatives. The company we work with, GraceCom, has been great with trying to help us out. They've had a lot of customers that are doing the same thing. They just can't afford to go this route. So they're very good about thinking outside of the box, and we're trying to get that squared away. But we do have that coming up, and we are going to have to pay for that with the technology budget. So we will have to put that in there. It's going to be a multi-year expense. It's going to be a big one. And then, like I said before, our infrastructure network equipment, the Equologic sans for the storage, our virtual server hosts, our Cisco switches and router, they've all come end of life, and we will need to replace those as well. As far as targeted areas of improvement for the coming year, you'll see some similarity to the last year because we're still trying to improve that. I think we've made some great strides this year, but we want to continue. Focus on instruction, a focus on technology availability and usability in the classroom and outside of the classroom, and a focus on communication. For the focus on instruction, we're still continuing with our one to one blended learning initiative with Chromebooks, laptops, tablets for the students, and the more we can get into the students' hands, the better. An increase of availability and usability of the mobile laptop layouts at the elementary school and the middle school level. So going back to what I said about the laptop carts, when we refurbished them, our main goal was to keep them working for another year or two, but also to simplify them and keep them as easy as we can for the younger kids. So I think we were able to do that, and we want to keep going that route and make sure that we're targeting the appropriate audience with the appropriate equipment. We want to help teachers to integrate technology into lesson planning via online learning management systems. So we've started working with a company called SchoolG. A lot of you have heard of Edmodo. It's a very similar product to Edmodo, but it actually intertwines with our other products very nicely. So Power School, our student information system, it combines right into their gradebook. Google Drive, which we use for Word documents, Excel documents, spreadsheets for the students, integrates right into there and has eliminated many, many steps for the students to submit their homework. So we've taken the technology aspect out of the picture and made it easy for the kids to do their homework and just have the teachers get it. So it plays very nice, and we're trying to get as much professional development around that as we can so that the teachers can start integrating it into their lesson plans more Upgrade existing computer hardware. This is along the same lines as what I was saying with the infrastructure. It was all part of that initial equipment lease. We're renewing that equipment lease this year after, like I said, we had the gap for one year. So we are due, we're overdue. So we want to make sure that, you know, all the computers are not just quick enough, but actually working. Some of the ones we have, the batteries are dying, the keyboards are falling apart. So we've hit the end of the line with that as well. And then continue to add interactive whiteboards and document cameras to the classrooms. We have, I believe, another 25 smart boards coming in. They were delivered today. We have another, we have them being installed tomorrow through Thursday. So we have a lot of excited teachers around the district. So the more of that we can do, the better. Focusing on technology availability and usability, again, like I said, we really want to streamline the usability of the overall technology experience. So fewer logins, fewer things to remember, fewer sets of instructions, the more we can streamline, the better. We want to replace older, less user friendly software with highly available web-based solutions. So this is back, again, like I said, with the SchoolG product. You can access that from any computer, any tablet, any location. So it's much better than the old style. You must be in this computer lab to access this piece of software, and we'll book a time slot and go from there. So everything we look at from now on is to have that high availability access component to it. And then provide greater home access to district offered resources for lesson planning or instructional time, so the teachers can go home and they don't have to worry about, how do I get my files? Did I bring my files? It's just as available as if they were here. So continuing to improve that every day as well. And then focus on communication. We're really looking to expand our professional development opportunities for faculty and staff, particularly in regard to the blended learning initiative. So we've been bringing in a lot of trainers and setting up teacher training sessions in regard to SchoolG and the flipped classroom style model of teaching and all of those types to help when we finally pull the trigger on this one to one initiative. So we're moving in the right direction, and we want to make sure we continue to move in the right direction. And we're helping the teachers to do that. We want to provide clear and concise instructions for how to access district technology resources. You know, the more of this that we can get together in one spot in a knowledge based type environment, the better. So people don't necessarily have to wait for us to help them. We can kind of get them started on their own, maybe help before we've helped them. So we're looking into more solutions like that. And create a seamless technology support experience for the faculty, staff, and students. One of the big things we're looking into right now is replacing our existing help desk software. Right now, it's kind of a roundabout way. Teachers spend a good chunk of time just submitting their problem, let alone dealing with their problem. So we want to make sure we take that layer out of things as well. That's it for me. If Dr. Dorwood?
Any questions?
Christian Lovett.
Since the phone replacement is going to be, as you mentioned, a multi-year, sort of a larger expense, are we doing it under just a normal budget, or is that going to be something we're going to look at as a capital project?
Well, Anne Marie and I had looked at doing it as a capital project, but unfortunately, we're not going to be able to do that. So we are going to have to kind of integrate that into the technology budget. So that's kind of another reason things are as tight as they are. We're trying to squeeze in this big unexpected project using the funds we already have. You know, aside from those salary codes, we've stayed flat. So, you know, you won't see any large bump anywhere else. So we're going to have to try and be creative and leverage any type of aid we can get. We're currently looking at E-rate to see if we can get up to 65% of it back. The problem with that is, and Anne Marie knows, is it doesn't come back to me. It goes back to revenue. So we're all for helping the team, but I still have to cram it in here. So.
Taking one for the team.
Yes, taking one for the team. So but we're doing everything we can as far as that's concerned. But it was a big unexpected expense. We didn't see it coming. Charlie Simon didn't see it coming when he put it in. GraceCom, our provider, didn't see it coming. So we are, needless to say, not going with that company again. We're going to find someone a little bit more reliable. So but we do have to get that in the existing budget.
BOSI doesn't have anything in terms of coasters or anything that we can piggyback off of, or?
They do, but it actually ends up being more expensive because we investigated that too. It's a different solution, which if we're starting fresh, makes it much more of a possibility, but it does end up costing us more because we would have to change our background infrastructure, and it gets to be a whole big to-do.
One more question. Part of your standard thing is to replace obsolete and antiquated old equipment over time, you know, not just the phones, but the standard laptops and computers, things like that. How are we on that? Are we still on schedule for that, or do we have to cheat a little bit?
We have been cheating for two years now. So we've, like I said, we've milked every last drop. We've completely rebuilt the system using open source software, anything we can scrounge up that will make these things run faster, more reliably, easier, and most importantly, longer, because they have been end of life for at least a year. If you ask the companies, they say two. So we're now on our third year. So this is a must, must upgrade time. So typically, the upgrade cycle was five years. So when that budget, when that equipment lease ended, the expectation would be we'd re-up immediately. So we were able to skip that and kind of extend that out a little bit longer, but we've hit the end. Anybody else? Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
So next, we have the facilities portion of the budget.
Good evening. I will speak briefly about facilities and operations on the budget side, and Henry Sibelli's in the audience. If you ask me anything technical that I don't know the answer to, I'm going to defer to him. Again, just briefly what we're going to talk about, we have a slide on all of our schools and our buildings, and we go over square footage just so that we can, we can show you how, you know, how big our facility is. We'll talk about the 1620, 1621 budget codes, and one is just operation, and one is maintenance, and that's just how it's split out on the budget codes. And then a comparison of what our facilities and operation budget is between the current year and the next year, and some budget changes that were made and some future considerations. So this is a list of all of our buildings in our square footage, and we have at various times, square footage is important for the facilities area to see basically how many custodial workers and custodians you need in a building. There's a formula, there's a whole procedure to do it. The good news is that we have not more than we need. We probably have a lot less than we need, but they do a great job keeping the buildings, you know, clean and where they need to be. So we have approximately 600,000 square feet across the districts, and then we have about 195 acres, which includes Duchess Stadium, is what we own. The current facilities and operations staff, there's a director of facilities and operations. Our administrative school secretary is now a halftime position, and we mentioned that earlier in the technology area. The full-time administrative school secretary, that was, it was split between technology and facilities. That person has taken on some additional technology responsibilities, so that's why her salary is all over into the technology area. So we have only a halftime in the facilities area. We have three maintenance mechanics, four groundskeepers, and 33 custodial staff. Those were the same numbers as last year, and the 33 custodial staff was a cut from two years ago. We did not replace an open position that was available at the time. So this is just a comparison from 1314 to 1415. You'll see the non-instructional salary area is the only account there that has increased. So in that area, reflected in there is the contractual increases for all of the staff that I just mentioned on the prior slide, offset by the reduction of the halftime clerical. So you can't really see it there, but it's all into that one line item on the budget. The only other area I would like to mention, because everything is pretty much the same, the contractual services has decreased for 1415. We were budgeting a smaller amount in the BOSI's area. We have BOSI's for 1620 and 1621. 1621 area is for our safety, for our inspection, so you'll see that will be remaining. But there was an area in this that we constantly budgeted for just in case, and I look back over the last five years and we haven't used it. So we decided to take it out of the budget. So that's the reduction in the contractual services area. You also see that the utilities area is flat. In the past, we budgeted a little bit more because we always feel that we're going to have a bad winter. So we had a bad, we're having a bad winter. So we looked at our projections just to make sure for this year, because this would be a good year to check and make sure that we're doing an adequate job budgeting and we will have enough money to pay. So even though we anticipate increases in both electric and propane, we're still going to maintain the budget that we have enough money to pay for that in the future. 1621 maintenance of plants, so this is where our maintenance mechanic salaries are. Again, when we did the clerical position, we split her between 1620 and 1621, so that's the difference you're seeing in the 1314 to 1415. That's the halftime salary. And everything else remains the same. So that's why there's a small decrease in there. So again, the budget changes, the two areas that we were able to reduce was the halftime clerical support and the reduction in the BOSI services, which we have not used. So we took it out of the, out of the budget. Future considerations, Henry and I have talked at great length about an additional vehicle, and the only reason we think about that so much is because we've had so much snow. And you remember when Charlie was here, you know, and he took over the department, we really didn't have a lot of vehicles at all. And we made a systematic approach to add a pickup and a plow and a sand, or sander every year, and we have not done that. So we believe, and we will talk about it again at the next budget workshop, because Ron will be here to talk about transportation. If we do decide to do that, we would present it to you as part of the proposition with the buses, because we feel that was probably the best way to do it. Try to live within, you know, our means here, but we're able to raise the levy if the proposition two passes. So we're still investigating what it is would be the best fit for us. But it would be helpful, we have, you know, we have an extra person that could plow. It, you know, when we don't have a lot of snow, it doesn't become an issue, but this year it really was challenging at best. So we're always looking at the quantity of work that's contracted out, you know, when we can use BOSI's, we do, but a great majority of the work is done in-house. We want to continue professional development opportunities. Henry has had vendors come here and work with our staff free of charge, just to give them, you know, an idea of their new products, their new cleaning, you know, products that are available. The new thing that we have is the energy performance contract, and we had talked to the board before, and it's still in its kind of continuation stage. The forms are all up to the state education department, so we're waiting for them to get approved. What we're told is that it, energy performance contracts tend to go to the bottom of the pile as far as capital projects are concerned. State education department doesn't look at them first, kind of looks at all the other capital projects that are out there. So although the ECG, who's actually running our energy performance contract, does believe that we will be able to do summer work. We're not so sure. So energy performance contracts also run differently. We don't have to bid the work out. But we might be able to do, you know, Henry and I have talked about this with Dr. Dorwood, we might be able to do some of the work. I wouldn't imagine a majority of the work would happen this summer. Again, when we talked about energy performance contract, we did talk about energy savings, but as you remember, the energy savings is used especially at the beginning to pay for the energy performance contract. So the ideal is that it's flat. It's just going to be changes. So next year, you'll see changes in where the budget, you might see a reduction in the utilities area, but you might see an increase in the debt service to kind of pay for all that stuff. And the capital project. So two things to say about the capital project. Our $12 million capital project, we still have money left, believe it or not. So, I mean, that's a great thing. We met with the financial advisors. We have probably a little less than $1 million. We have some final cost reports that need to be filed this June, and our building aid is still flowing on that, on that project. So we're not sure what we're going to do with that. We're looking at our, we had our five-year plan done several years ago. There's still some items on there that we'd like to address. So if we're thinking about doing that and going to state, we'd have to go to state ed for approval, we will come to the board and discuss that. I also want to mention capital project on a different note, and it's not a decision that has to be made in, you know, the near future. But three years from now, we will end our deficit financing bond. We paid that for 10 years. We will have a big drop off, we'll have a significant drop off in debt service. So that might be the time that if we decide to do another capital project, that might be the time. So if we are able to go out and decide what we want to do, there's lots of work to do, obviously, to keep the buildings up to, you know, up to snuff. You want to do renovation work and maintenance. So we may come to you within the next year just to kind of see what's going on and whether that's something that the board wants to do. So we're investigating that, but we have some time left in there. But I just kind of want to put a bug in your ear, you know, within the next year, we might be coming to talk to you about that. Oops, I went back too far. So that's it. Does anyone have any questions on the budget area?
I just had one question, Anne Marie. It's sort of something that was mentioned in both budgets, and it might be just me not understanding. So is this true? There was one administrative assistant that was split between technology and facilities.
Her position title was split between facilities and technology. So she was a halftime technology. She was, it was a little easier to see because she worked directly with Charlie, and Charlie had two hats when he was here. And when he retired, we split out the director's positions. Her salary was coded all to facilities. So although she did, although her work was half and half, her salary was coded to the two different areas in facilities. So there was a need for additional technology support. We were having some issue with some of the staff working overtime, which we didn't necessarily budget, so we were kind of moving money around within the budget codes. So the thought was, Tim looked into having BOSI's come in one or two days a week to do that. It was expensive, even though we would get BOSI's aid on it. So this person, the administrative assistant, expressed an interest in doing that sort of work. So it's within her job title, but yet it was helpful that she had the technology experience in the district.
So now that one person is all technology?
Yes.
But there's still a .5 in facilities. Is that someone new? Is that a new position?
That's our receptionist that's sitting in the front. So we had to add to the receptionist because we have the buzzin' system for the security. So we needed someone to actually sit at the front. So that person is doing half of the facilities area, and she's also halftime receptionist in the front and central office.
So she... So she was half-time doing something different, and now she's added half-time in facilities?
She was, she was in an added position in the district because with this initiative of security, we had brought in a half-time person and then for a short term. But it was found that the need was. So there is an additional position in the budget, if that's what you mean.
I'm just trying to say, so it was one, and now it's one and a half.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Does anybody else have any questions?
Thank you, Anne Marie.
Okay, thank you.
Do we have a motion for executive session?
Motion to adjourn to executive session to review the employment history of a particular individual, and the board will return as soon as possible. Second.
Comments or questions?